We'll go ahead and convene the meeting at this time. Tracy, would you take role, please?
Harrington?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Pollack?
Here.
Smith?
With pleasure, here.
Wason?
Here, here.
The agenda is before you. There are no changes, so a motion to approve would be asked for.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, anything on that list that you would like to pull out and talk about first? If not, a motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Now's the time for a public comment from anyone that is here that, items that are not on the agenda. Move ahead. Kevin, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll report on some projects. The Southwest Growth Utility project, really not much update. We continue to push the contractor, and we're going to have another meeting with them on Thursday morning. Rancho Way Phase Five, work continues on Phase Two with removals of storm sewer and rough grading. And then also Verizon and Lumen Utility Relocations is ongoing. Really no issues to report, which is good news, and the contractor seems to be generally on schedule. Your replacement project, we had the pre-construction meeting with Icon. Item to note here is there's a little up to two months without pool use. However, we think that that will probably be closer to one month, probably the month of September. That's kind of what Shelley's hoping for and the contractor is shooting for also. And it'll probably only affect the indoor pool. We don't, they're supposed to mobilize in mid-August, but we don't think it'll affect the outdoor pool and that's scheduled. City Hall project, we have started on the schematic design phase, and we're planning for our first city staff smittle on or about September 3rd. And lastly, let's see, Forever Green Road Trail Project, that's on tonight for award. And the Centennial Park Loop Road, that one is scheduled for award of on July 27th. I should note that we're also going to have the public hearing on that same night. Normally, we try to do it a meeting ahead, but on this one, we missed the date, unfortunately. That's how we used to do them on the same night. It still follows the state law, but we'll have the public hearing and that award contract on that same council agenda. We have had some pretty good interest. If you notice, the bids on the trail project, they were really good, and there were quite a few of them. We're getting that same interest in Centennial Park, so we're hoping for really good bids on that one, too. That's all I have. Unless you have questions.
Anything for Kevin?
What are we doing on Forever Green Road and traffic lights?
Oh, at Jones? Yeah, they're getting, I don't know if it's up yet, but they're getting ready for the temporary signal that's going to be going up.
Anything else? Mr. Hayer.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Just a few items from me. First, Tracy and I participated in a bond rating call with Moody's last week. And we anticipate hearing from them sometime this week on a rating for the upcoming bond that we're selling on July 27th. The conversation was favorable. As always, we've asked for, asked them to consider increasing our rating. While they said they would consider it, I think they've said one of the, one of the impacts to why we've been where we are for such a long time is just tax base. And we just aren't quite to that next size yet. But we keep pushing for it, and hopefully someday that'll happen. And again, once we get that press release, we'll forward it out to the council, so you're aware of it. Just as a reminder, next Monday, July 19th, is the joint government meeting. The school district is hosting that virtually. If you have not received a link just yet, you will shortly. And then lastly, I mentioned this to some of you folks in our individual meetings, but we continue to look at the ARP funds, the eligibility requirements, work on obtaining the revenue from the state. Tracy and I participated in several webinars along those lines. The state actually just received the federal money last week, I think it was. We've applied for our allocation. We got an email today with some questions about that, but we're working through that process to get those funds, half of those funds anyway, transferred over to us. Tracy and I continue to learn more about eligible uses, and we hope to have a conversation with the city council in August to talk about eligible uses and seek direction from this group. We also know that the county and Iowa City are holding some public hearings. We had some folks speak to us at the last joint meeting, so I'm sure you'll be hearing from folks about how they'd like to see that fund, those funds used. Short version, though, is more to come in August. That's what I have tonight.
Okay, any questions for Ryan? Very good. Mayor report, we had the MPO meeting last week, which was pretty bland. Nothing really new on the horizon, just past long-range plans, so nothing new there. Again, the joint meeting is 19th, next Monday. I will be at an orthopedic doctor's appointment, so I hope somebody can jump in on that one and cover, if you would, somebody would.
Yep, we'll be there.
Thank you. Project Better Together. Hi, Kim.
Hi. Thanks for having me tonight. And I know so, and Kate may be flying in here. She's going to join me on this, too. And actually, we're here this evening on behalf of the Iowa City Area Business Partnership, the Iowa City Area Development Group, Think Iowa City, and the Iowa City Downtown District, just to give you a quick update on where we're at with Project Better Together, but more importantly, to ask for your continued support as we look ahead to what we're calling PBT 2.0. So I'll start with just that, you know, first slide, and I'm really taking it back to May 2020, when we put together a charter for this Project Better Together initiative with over 30 different organizations, you know, on a steering committee. And we were lucky to have both Ryan and Brent sit on this PBT Steering Committee and guide this work of, you know, PBT 1.0. And, you know, the goal was always to help this community recover from the impacts of COVID-19, but also to reshape an even more resilient and sustainable future. So that second piece was always part of it, and we had both short-term actions and long-term actions we were working on. But I think what we all didn't realize back then is how often we would be pulled back into relief and recovery mode. And, and really, you know, are just coming to the phase where we have some stability and can work no long term. And so that's really what we're focusing on next. And so, you know, the next couple of slides are just things, you know, we come to, I think it was a couple of months ago, to share out all the accomplishments from the, you know, the past year, year and a half, all the great work that got done. Besides the short-term, you know, reactionary work, we also were able to kick off a lot of long-term type work as well. For example, one of them is our BIPOC Business Ecosystem Group, of which we're able to engage additional folks in that work. Rakesha has been a part of that group as well, and that work will continue. But I think the question for us, you know, the next slide is, so what, now what? And how do we continue the momentum of Project Better Together? How do we continue to drive action, both kind of in an agile, flexible way, but also in a very long-term way? And how do we keep the collaboration going, most importantly? And how do we turn, you know, what was this common crisis that bound us to a common vision? And so, we like to use this analogy of a puzzle as, you know, as we think about this work and we think about visions. And so imagine we all have a set of puzzle pieces dumped in front of us, and could we connect them? Yeah. You might be a struggle without having that picture, yes. And so to us, really, that picture, that vision represents the picture on the puzzle box. And, you know, what really are, you know, are we trying to build? Is it a bridge or is it a landscape? And so, so really what this work is about is developing that picture on the puzzle box, so we can connect the puzzle pieces. We have been looking at other communities that have established community visions. Two that we really gravitated towards were the Chattanooga area and Omaha. And, you know, learned that, you know, this work is driven, in the Chattanooga case, it was driven by the Chamber Foundation, but in partnership with several other organizations driving this work. And same with Omaha, that the key steering committee also involved the United Way and the Urban League. And so, you know, both of what we like about these visions is, you know, when you look at them, especially the Chattanooga one, they've got five goals, it's very actionable, it's data-driven, the process they used was very inclusive, you know, and it's tangible. And so, and then when you look at the next slide, what a lot of our communities do as well is, once you have that vision, you build a dashboard to track those metrics. What we really like about the Greater MSP example is that they track inclusive economic growth, and that's a key component. And so we've got some, you know, great examples out there to leverage. So as we look ahead to our own community and Better Together 2030, you know, what does that mean for us in terms of identifying a community vision? And so, for us, you know, we'd love to build on that momentum of PBT's success, you know, and pivot from this reaction, you know, towards a proactive effort to really unify the community via this vision. The objectives are to develop a clear, data-driven perspective of our area's future. And from that, look at all angles and all different trends, demographic, economic, political. Also have a very inclusive process. In some ways, the journey of this is more important than the actual outcome in terms of building relationships across various stakeholder groups and including voices that aren't typically included at the community and economic development table. And third, really defining priorities for our area, you know, with a 2030 horizon that are clear, that are measurable, that can be shared, that can be tracked via dashboard. So those are our key objectives with this, and, you know, I think the results would be that this vision, you know, can then be used to help drive decisions, you know, particularly decisions around funding, you know, decisions around priorities. And that, you know, organizations, you know, not just ours, but others in the community will have this kind of holistic vision that they can align each of their individual strategic plans to. And lastly, that we've got residents and stakeholders living here that kind of have a say in that vision for their community, which I think is pretty darn cool. So in terms of the process and how we get there, so you think of your own kind of organizations, you know, having strategic plans. So how do we do this at a community level, right? It seems enormous. And so, we have spoken with and are in the process of contracting Rebecca Ryan, who's a consultant in this space. She did the Omaha vision, she did the Chattanooga vision. And we had a number of conversations with her and just kind of landed on, she's our person. Her process is very inclusive, very vetted. She's really well-known in this space. She's got a tremendous amount of respect. She's been in this community. She presented at ICAS Annual Meeting a number of years ago. And I think she just, she gets us. She understands where we're at. She's really a strong facilitator, and that's what we need. We need someone to kind of force really difficult conversations and to work us through a process. And so, her process is called the Strategic Foresight Process, and we're still kind of learning the nitty-gritty of it. But it goes through, you know, a sensing phase where you're looking at these various, you know, data points and trends. It goes through an imagining phase where you're looking at all the possible scenarios. Then you're calling the scenarios down, and then you're deciding on the scenario, and then you're implementing. And her process involves, like, you've got a core planning team, you've got a steering committee, and then you've got a huge amount of people that participate in this kind of scenario exercises. And so, and it involves surveys and focus groups and meetings with key stakeholders. And so that's why it's kind of a very, again, a lasting, inclusive process. And the good news is that, you know, in terms of on the, you know, the flip side, like, okay, great, we have this great vision. We don't want it to sit on the shelf. How do we execute on it? You know, Rebecca and her proposal recommended we use strategic doing to execute. And ICAS has already invested, you know, in that framework, and we've got people across the community trained up in strategic doing. And so we're confident that our organizations, you know, can handle the implementation part. And so we're really excited about that. So in terms of timeline and next steps, we have the support of the PBT Steering Committee to move forward on this. We did announce it at our celebration event on June 16th. We got support, each of our own individual four organizations got support from each of our boards on the initial funding for the kind of first half of the contract with Rebecca. And so our organizations are all bought in. We're currently in the process of meeting with you all, with all the city councils, with the county, with the university, United Way, Community Foundation, we have the banks. We have several people on our hit list to kind of meet with, to ask for investment in both this process and this consultant facilitating, you know, arriving at the vision work, but then also some, you know, additional funding for that, to launch the execution piece. And so, so that's ultimately really why I'm here today. Our ask of you is for a contribution of $5,000 to support the work. We've made that ask. Actually, we're making that ask right now, Nancy and Josh at the Corville City Council, you know, for them as well. And Iowa City at 10K. And so, and then again, the several other orgs, we're making an ask, too, as well, for funding. And that will go towards both this contract for Rebecca Ryan and this process, as well as kind of the launch of execution that will be needed in the initial phase. So, sorry, I wasn't sure how much time I had, but that is my presentation and my pitch to you.
Questions for Kim? Grant, you've been kind of involved in this. What's your thoughts?
Yeah, Mayor, I, you know, I've, no surprise, have been, you know, somewhat critical about our singular approach to economic development within North Liberty. I think that, you know, we need a more aggressive approach towards that diversification and tax base that Moody's wants to see from us as well. But this, this process, this committee approaches things like that and many others in a very inclusive way. And I've been very pleased to be a part of it. They have included North Liberty from the beginning. They have, they have all been respectful of one another. There are an enormous amount of representatives from this community, from the region, from the creative corridor, part of this group. And I think we need to continue to participate with this. I think that we have already seen some, some great positive things come out of this. One just very small one was the nests that came during COVID within the community that really helped take care of those children that really needed a space to be able to do online learning and other things when they weren't in school. So that's just one very small piece that they brought to our community and that we've been able to participate in. And many others that we don't have time for tonight. But I would urge the council to participate with this process. I think that it'll, it'll yield way more than what $5,000 is going to cost us.
Rakesha, you in the back, comment, I know.
Yes, I just wanted to say, this was a prime example of just coming together and what that looks like when oftentimes communities, municipalities can be in silos. And this group worked across the board, and like you said, it was holistic, it was inclusive. You thought about everybody. And moving forward to 2.0, you're thinking even on a broader spectrum to bring more voices to the table, because we had to move quickly in the time of need. And we would be remiss if we didn't participate in this. And so I strongly support it.
Other comment?
Kim, I was in the board meeting with you, a small group of us from you to these boards. So I think I was probably the most vocal. I may have teared up at one point in time, I'm not quite sure. So you know my answer. I think this is going to be a fantastic effort. We did so much because we had to do so much last year, and now we get to choose to do so much because we want to do so much. So you got my vote, too. Thank you.
Very wise investment, I think, here in the future.
Then I would ask the council to establish at this point in time until we get a resolution formalized, the authorization to write a resolution for the expenditure of $5,000 toward this.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Okay, moved, seconded, thirded, fourthed, whatever.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Good move.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks for the leadership, Kim. Appreciate it.
The Preserve, Part Five, final plan. Mr. Rosnick?
So we have 16 lots. This connects the west part of the Preserve to the east end and extends Denison Avenue over. So these are zoned RS6, all single-family residential lots. So we recommend approval of the final plat.
Any questions for Mr. Rosnick? Applicant presentation?
I do not see Mr. Hahn here, so we don't have one, but it's a pretty straightforward request.
Okay, before you have, before you, Resolution Number 2021-63, a resolution approving the final plat and accepting improvements for the Preserve, Part Five, North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, final discussion or questions? Tracy, take role, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollack? Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Annie?
Hello?
Would you wish to vote aye or nay on the amendment?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution passes five affirmative and none opposed. Have also library board appointment. I'm asking for the council to affirm Heidi Wood to the vacant library board.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
I just appreciated her returning and her investment in serving on this board. She seems very dedicated and committed to it.
That was a nice one to get back.
That's a great application, too.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Annie. Motion carries. TNR Site Plan. Mr. Rosnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is an industrially zoned property. This is Liberty Doors, northwest corner of West Penn Street and Nathan. They're proposing is a little over a 13,000 square foot building addition and a 12,000 square foot standalone building. This would be predominantly your contractor bays. They ran out these as industrial units. We have the related infrastructure as well with this. But again, it's, as mentioned, it's an industrial property with a lot of overhead doors. We've got masonry on both of the buildings in accordance with the design standards, and the Planning Commission recommended approval. They had two findings, and staff recommends as well. I do see Mr. Mitchell out in the audience if you have questions for the applicant.
Applicant's presentation, please. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Ben Mitchell. I'm with MMS Consultants. I'm just here to give you any questions.
Pretty straightforward. Looks good.
I guess not, sir. Before you, Resolution Number 2021-64, a resolution approving the development site plan for Lot One, TNR subdivision, Part Two, North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollack?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Forever Green Road Trail Project. Any comments there, Mr. Kevin?
On June 29th, we had six bids. They were really good bids. The low bidder was TK Concrete from Pell, Iowa, $99,760. The engineer's estimate was $125,000, and we do recommend award to TK Concrete.
I see that they were contacted or recommendations were given?
Yeah, I called one of the city engineers and talked to them, who are familiar with them, and they gave me a pretty good recommendation.
Good, good. Therefore, you have Resolution Number 2021-65, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing execution of the contract for Forever Green Road Trail Improvements Project, North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy?
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollack?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Item 14, 2021A Bond Sale. This will be a Resolution Number 2021-66, a resolution authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement in connection with the issuance of general obligation bonds noted as Series 2021A and setting the date for the sale of the bonds. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Pollack?
Aye.
Wason? Wesson?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
That resolution passes five affirmative and none opposed. Next, you have Urban Renewal Amendment, and do you want to go into that just a little bit, if you would, please?
I sure can. So, an urban renewal amendment is necessary anytime the city wants to invest in a project using TIF dollars. And so, in this case, we have two of them on this upcoming bond issuance, and that's St. Andrews Drive and Ranshaw Way. We also are taking the liberty to add a few other projects into the plan, and I just want to remind the folks that just because it's in the plan doesn't necessarily mean that there's funding source down the road, it just gives us that option. And so, you'll see in here Penn Meadows Park, and I'm sorry, I lost my page here, but a couple of other projects that will be down the road a little ways, including Dubuque Street and the next phase of Ranshaw. And so, we're just kind of getting a jump on those, getting those in the plan, because it does, it is a process to update the plan, there's a cost to it, we work with our legal, our bond counsel, we have to meet with, we get to meet with the county and school districts to explain what we're doing. So, rather than do these one at a time, we thought it made sense to do an amendment, a bigger amendment, a larger amendment at one time.
Any questions? If not, you have Resolution Number 2021-67, a resolution setting date for public hearing on designation of expanded North Liberty urban renewal area and on urban renewal plan amendment. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock? Wesson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollock.
Annie? Resolution passes four affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Dubuque Street Project, Resolution Number 2021-68, a resolution approving the purchase of temporary construction easements in right-of-way by the City of North Liberty for the Dubuque Street Phase 1 project. I don't think there's really anything going there, we've been talking about this one for a while.
More of the same? These were, are for the appraised values or the estimated values that you, that council's already seen.
Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollock.
Annie, are you able to vote? Resolution passes four affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Number two, Resolution Number 2021-69, a resolution authorizing relocation assistance and reimbursement for non-residential tenants displaced by the acquisition of certain properties for the Dubuque Street Phase 1 project. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any final questions?
So there's, go ahead.
Don't you go.
No, so there's an average in here, is there, is that what you were gonna speak to?
I'll be happy to speak to this. This one bears a little bit of explanation, since we haven't done this before. In a previous meeting, I mentioned that when we displace people, when any entity displaces people, we follow the same rules that the DOT uses and the same forms that they use. They also use forms and rules that are, that come from federal law. And so, federal law provides for the relocation for certain entities through a few different ways. One of them that you see here is by the averaging of the net profits of those entities for the previous two years. You can, in some instances, you can say, I have a building with this many rooms and consult a chart, and that says that's, and then you have this many thousand dollars to move with. You can tabulate every dollar, and that can be one way that they calculate this. A third way that's permitted, and the applicant gets to choose how they determine how the refund, how the funding for them is calculated, is by providing copies of their tax returns, which were provided to me, I didn't put them in the packet for obvious reasons, but I verified that the income was in excess of the hard cap of $40,000 a year for the veterinarian clinic. That was, their profits were in excess of that for two years, and so the average of that is $40,000. For design lines, it was within a few hundred dollars of $32.5 for the years 2018 and 2019. We did not use 2020 because that property was affected by COVID, and so we can have the opportunity to, actually, like, a much reduced profit in that year. And so, for fairness, the city can use, and I recommend, using those two previous years. And I think there's a notation on that portion. So, that's where those, these calculations come from. This represents two of the three displaced entities from the last remaining parcel that has yet to be acquired.
That was my question, thank you, also.
Any other questions? Please take a roll.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Can you vote, Annie? Resolution passes four affirmative and none opposed, one absent. Ag Experience Ordinance, was there issues you wanted to talk about beforehand, before we go into the second consideration?
I don't think so.
Okay, just wanted to check. Second consideration of Ordinance Number 2021-12, in ordinance amending portions of Chapters 167, 168, and 170 of the City of North Liberty Code of Ordinances, defining permitted agricultural and livestock uses, removing confined animal feeding operations as a permitted use, creating regulations for an agricultural experience use, modifying signage and off-street parking requirements in general, and modifying accessory uses for community food pantries. Anyone wish to establish the second consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, final questions? Annie, we're on the Ag Experience Program on that amendment, so it's been moved and seconded. I didn't know if you wanted to make any comments on that one yet or not.
No, thanks.
Okay. Tracy?
Hoffman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Second consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. Any old business to bring toward council? Any new business? Mr. Lenz, may we go into closed session according to Iowa Code, Section 21.51, subsection J, to discuss purchase of property of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price of governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property?
It is my opinion that council may, with an affirmative vote of three quarters of the councils.
Thank you. Anyone wish to establish a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Tracy?
Smith?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Motion to go executive session passes five affirmative and none opposed. What do we need to shut down?
Well, we can go to the back closed-session room, and these folks can finish up here.